Everyone, I'm Dee Wright and I am the Shawnee Mission School District Citizenship Contest Writing Contest Chair, also for the SMAC, if you all know what that means, it's the Area Council. The citizenship contest for 2015-2016 theme is "I Can Be A Hero In My Community" by. So every one of these students here took that theme and they gave their interpretation of that. So tonight, they're being rewarded for their efforts. And they are award-winning writers. So let me give you some of the statistics. Last year, we had a total of 1,092 Shawnee Mission School District students that participated. This year, we had 1,856.
Oh my gosh.
So out of our school district, we had 260 poems enter. And out of our school district, we had 1,596 essays. The citizenship contest is 5th grade through 9th grade, that's where it stops. And some of you may know about the reflections, that's a, you know, a second grade through high school. So people get these two contests confused. This is just a writing contest. So, we have awards of excellence tonight, which is a first place, and we have awards of merit, which is second place. So in the entire school district, that you have first and second place winners here. And for those of you that don't know, the awards of excellence, the first place have been forwarded on to the state PTA, and they are being judged, and those winners will be announced sometime in March. So, we are going to start first with the awards of merit. And we have for 5th grade essay, Soren, and I'm not going to say this right, Diakovic. Thank you. Soren Diakovic. Krista McCullough Elementary. For 5th grade poem, we have Sidney Riley, Tomahawk Elementary. 6th grade essay, Alexa Wagstaff, Mill Creek Elementary. 6th grade poem, Erin Ralston, Highlands Elementary. 7th grade essay, Olivia Williamson, Trail Ridge Middle School. 7th grade poem, Alex Hughes, Hocker Grove Middle School. 8th grade essay, Hallie Amstein, did I say it right? Amston? Hocker Grove Middle School. 8th grade poem, Grace Goodpastor, Trail Ridge Middle School. And now, we have the award of excellence, which is the equivalent of the first place. 5th grade essay, Reagan Wagstaff, Belinder Elementary. 5th grade poem, Greta Steckshult, Brookwood Elementary. 6th grade essay, Isabella Seibin, Trailwood Elementary. 6th grade poem, Sidney Johnson, Brookwood Elementary. 7th grade essay, Gretchen Panovich, Westridge Middle School. I might want to mention here in middle school, if you want to pay attention to something here, see if you catch on to the pattern. 7th grade poem, Zach Wallenberg, Westridge Middle School. 8th grade essay, Hannah Silverstone, Westridge Middle School. 8th grade poem, Sidney Leslie, Westridge Middle School. They swept, they swept it. And 9th grade essay, Luke Bledsoe, Shawnee Mission East High School. So, we will have two group pictures of each of the categories with, yeah, an all-together group also. And then, do, please, the parents and the award-winning writers, please don't leave, because downstairs, we're having a reception and we have some more awards to give you. Okay? Thank you, everyone. I also want to point out, we have 100% attendance here tonight, 100% attendance for all the families that are here. And, just real briefly on some of the stories that have touched me before, we had one family here, 14, I say you can invite as many family members as you want, they livestream it so parents or grandparents that can't make it here can see it. But they had 14 family members, and it was their first, I could, I get tears, it was the first person they ever had to win an award in their family. And they brought an interpreter, and we had another student that won one year a poem, oh my goodness, all phonetically. So in their second language, they were able to convey their heart and what they felt, and they were able to touch the judges' heart, and they won writing a poem phonetically. So, it's a pretty cool contest.
If I may, I just want to say one, a couple of words. My name's Tash Davis, I'm the Shawnee Mission Area Council PTA President. Dee Wright, and teachers and parents, thank you so much for your awesome participation in this. I did want to acknowledge Dee, because she, this is her last year, she's done this for about nine years? Or longer? Oh, okay, okay, longer. Cultural arts for nine-plus years. But I want to thank you very much, and the Board of Education, for always recognizing our students and the students. I wanted to offer a great big congratulations to you. I know how hard you worked on that. So thank you, and thank you all for your participation. And thank you, Dee.
Please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Dr. Henson, Dee one.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Earlier this year, we highlighted many exciting programs, staff members, and students as part of the Shawnee Mission staff members, and students as part of the Shawnee Mission School District's State of the District Address at the Annual Foundation Breakfast. In order to continue to share some of the amazing stories, we're going to do something a little different tonight. We're going to launch a video feature as a part of this board report. So let's take a look at the video feature tonight, please. I think we're going to take a look at the video feature tonight.
Our school, Shawnee Mission East, actually closed out state, which means that we got first place and second place. When someone's good at debate, they're not just good at speaking, because whenever someone wins Nationals, you know that they've put a ton of effort into the activity. And I know that, at least this year and the last year, I've put a bunch of effort into debate. Every Tuesday and Thursday after school, I'll go to the debate room for about four hours. I also have a YouTube channel where I make YouTube videos to help spread my love of chemistry with everyone else. It's meant for people in high school who are taking Chem 1 and Chem 2, who don't really understand the concepts that they're being learnt, and want just like a little extra guidance and alternative viewpoint of how they can learn the material. So I try to offer that to them. And I also do some magic videos for my chemistry channel, because I like bringing magic into the world of chemistry.
Empty. So we're going to have two cards.
The inside one has a negative charge, the outside one.
Once, I'll teach someone about an experiment, and then we'll actually do the experiment. So we never just like sit the whole, however long it takes, and just learn stuff like book-learn. We'll actually perform an experiment every day, and I think that's important. So I've been playing for a while. And then around middle school, I started learning jazz piano. So now I play jazz piano, jazz violin, and classical violin occasionally. And I play mainly for fun, although I am in the Midwest Chamber Ensemble, which is a professional orchestra composed mainly of UMKC Music Conservatory students. I decided to share my love of music with helping the community. So I decided to collect guitars to donate to veterans to help them recover from wartime traumas through music therapy. Although there were some challenges that I encountered, encouraging the public and telling them of my project would galvanize them to take action and help me. In fact, Mr. Keith Kleikis, who's the owner of a nearby guitar center, he actually personally spent many hours fixing all of the guitars free of charge and repaired all of them. And then on Veterans Day, I actually got to go to the World War Memorial with my scout troop and present about my project during the Walk of Honor Ceremony. So that was really, that was really cool. And then I got my Eagle Scout ranking. To me, knee hockey is a way to break down social barriers, because I know there are a lot of people who are cut from varsity sports, or people who are new here and don't have a friend group. And I think knee hockey is a way where we accept everyone. Our motto is "Everyone's on varsity." So the only thing that really matters is that you can hit a ball with a stick, and even if you can't hit a ball with a stick, you can just eat jalapeno chips, which is our official snack.
Bobbush is very approachable. He has a great sense of humor. I think he's definitely a people person, which also comes kind of hand in hand with doing well competitively in communication-based activities, like debate and speech. His work ethic, and really to excel in this activity, this is true of many activities, but you really have to be intrinsically motivated. I never have really pressured Bobbush to excel. I think he always has had that drive to excel. But I don't think it's out of just wanting to win. It's because I think he really does love these activities.
I'm always constantly trying to improve, not only myself, but I'm also trying to help the younger debaters at Shawnee Mission East, so when I leave next year, I can make them as competitive as possible. What makes me more proud than my accomplishments, like qualifying to Nationals and winning states, is seeing when younger Shawnee Mission East teams that I've told, like, if you hear this certain argument, you should say this, they do that, and then they win a debate round, even if they don't break or win the tournament. That is something that I've found is really important to me.
Bobbush, I think you're in the audience tonight. Is that correct? Congratulations. The 2016 Presidential Scholar candidates have been announced, and Shawnee Mission is proud to have three candidates named in the program this year. Bobbush Denikar, who we just saw recognize in the video, along with Lilly Wuthmeyer from Shawnee Mission East, and Rennie Ma from Shawnee Mission West. Our candidates in the program created to honor some of the nation's most distinguished graduating high school seniors. Congratulations to these three young people. Olivia Mark, junior at Shawnee Mission South, and Erin Smith, a sophomore at Shawnee Mission West, are 2016 winners of the Western Missouri and Kansas affiliate for Aspirations in Computing from the National Center for Women in Information Technology. Trust you have that. The honor is given to students who have demonstrated aptitude and aspiration in technology and computing, leadership ability in academic history, and plans for post-secondary education. So congratulations to these two individuals as well. We would like to congratulate the Shawnee Mission East Lancers. They earned first and second place at the Kansas State High School Activities Association 6A State Two-Speaker Debate Tournament. Mr. Denikar and Spencer Mitchell earned the first-place trophy, and Nate Paris and Will Bledsoe received second-place honors. This was the second year in a row Shawnee Mission East earned first and second place in state finals. Shawnee Mission Northwest students Noah Gruman and Juliana Cantner were named state champions at the Sunflower Invitational Kansas-Nava State Tournament earlier this month as well. Westridge Middle School students are rehearsing for a special collaborative original production to be performed with students from the Kansas School for the Deaf. "We Share a Language" will be performed in spoken word and sign language. Performances will be held at Westridge on February 3, and at the Kansas School for the Deaf on February 4 and February 25. You will also be able to see the event recording on Shawnee Mission's cable channels. This unique learning opportunity has been made possible with support from the Shawnee Mission Education Foundation, the Kansas Deaf Cultural Center, and also the Kansas School for the Deaf. Something that we would also all aspire to do as well, or maybe not quite so, so Belice Akula, senior from Shawnee Mission North, was named the Gatorade Kansas Boys Cross Country Runner of the Year. The 6A state cross-country champion was recently named the Kansas City's All-Star Metro Cross Country Boys Runner of the Year, and also recently was recognized in the Sports Illustrated magazine. Shawnee Mission journalists recently earned more than 50 Quill and Scroll Yearbook Awards of Excellence. Additionally, the 2015-2016 Shawnee Mission South Yearbook was selected to be a Ball Four national sample and will be used as a journalism resource across the country. Shawnee Mission schools have been able to join the National Football League in celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Super Bowl. Former Super Bowl competitors are presenting Wilson Gold footballs to their alma mater. Shawnee Mission South welcomed Super Bowl athlete Rodney Pete recently. In this February, Shawnee Mission Northwest will welcome Super Bowl athlete Ryan Lilja. This year, Shawnee Mission is home to two of the Kansas Horizon Award winners. Brett Mock, a language arts teacher at Shawnee Mission Northwest, and Katie Sutton, a third-grade teacher at Oak Park Carpenter Elementary, were notified of the honor by Kansas Commissioner of Education Randy Watson. The Horizon Award recognizes first-year teachers who perform in a way that distinguishes them as outstanding, so they were first-year a year ago. Shawnee Mission School District Human Resources representatives have been busy with early recruitment. You will see the results. In the board agenda tonight, with some early hires, more than 100 interviews were conducted at one recruiting event in November on the Tuesday night prior to Thanksgiving. We're excited so many education professionals are interested in their careers in the Shawnee Mission School District. A new website has been launched to help individuals in need connect with helpful resources. The Shawnee Mission School District Resource Connection can be found under the Community tab on the website. If you know someone in need of food, clothing, housing, healthcare, counseling, transportation, employment, and/or educational resources, this website will provide information for how to help meet those needs. We want each student to come to school safe, healthy, and ready to learn, and this is a helpful step in making that possible. So congratulations to all of our many honorees tonight, our students and our employees as well. On your board agenda, as you are aware tonight, there is the calendar for the 16-17 school year. You are keenly aware that calendars are a challenge. We have state requirements we have to meet. And as a part of that, we do like to have a break over holiday periods of time. We like to end the first semester before the holiday break as well. And so we're starting school on a Friday. It's a singular day. If we did not do that and waited till Monday, the option would be take a day from one of the holiday breaks, or Thanksgiving, or the December break. We could have our teachers come back after Memorial Day in May, maybe even later, depending on the weather. Or we could take the one district-wide PD day that we have on September 30. Those are the options. And so when we look at those holiday breaks, obviously that dictates to us the days that we're in school. So a little bit of background information for you. We have a little bit of construction going on in the school district, new construction, and also some repair work that is being done. So Dr. Southwick, if you would give us an update, please.
I don't think I can duplicate the good news that you've shared with the board and the audience, but I'll do my best. There's two pictures that we have tonight to show you. The first is very exciting, is Chihuahua, the rebuild. I think most of you were able to take a real quick tour through that building last week, and we're happy to say that we're on track to move furniture in, staff, and students after spring break. So a lot of work between now and then, but that is a rebuild of an elementary school that was needed to be rebuilt. It was built on-site. Your all's vision is aboard, and Dr. Henson's to revitalize that neighborhood, I think, will be realized in March when we open school up after spring break. So we're excited about that. The other picture that we've got, and we actually get live pictures of these daily, is the Center for Academic Achievement. And as you can see, the snow and the weather has not curtailed the work that we've been able to do on that building. We've got one floor left to pour on the back half of the building. It's actually an area where our clinic will be. And after they do that, we'll be able to move forward all winter long. I think glass panels are supposed to start showing up at the end of the month, and hopefully we'll see some of those that will be as a part of the structure of the building. Work on the other elementary schools. All I can tell you is it's winter. We have one that we've made great progress with, I think, considering the conditions, and that's Bennett-Brierwood. We have walls that are up, all the underground infrastructure's in. Not so lucky at Crestview. I was having a conversation with one of the board members earlier tonight, that if we could crush the rock, we might be able to build the fifth elementary school that we found at Crestview. But we're making progress. We're finally beginning to work on some underground infrastructure there. And we're working on all of the footings and the pads at Trail Wood, so that work continues to be done. Had a meeting just today on Benninghoven. We've got a groundbreaking set for April 1, I believe, is the date that's been chosen. We'll probably actually be moving a little bit of dirt before then. And actually, I'm traveling to the PTA, or to the faculty meeting on February the 23 to be able to show once again the faculty what their new building will look like. So it's very exciting. We've got some other things that are going on. Just a little bit of an update about Ray Marsh. All of the structural shoring of the building is done. The wall is put in place. We were going to try to save some money and use the fence back, and realized that that would probably not be the best thing to do. So I think we have a change order tonight to add some fence to that project. And then we've elected to pour a pad of concrete that was a little bit extra for that job, because the fire department needs to be able to get around the back part of the building. And none of the asphalt companies are open right now, and we want to get that road in there. So that progress is made. The note that I've got is that they hope to be able to do a lot of that work this week if it stays warm. We continue to work on the aquatic center and the design of that, as well as the design of stadium. We're not even at a point in time where we have things to share with the board, but as we do, we will bring that to you. So last piece is a lot of work to be done this summer. We're going to move forward with the kitchen at Tomahawk. We've got a planning commission meeting with the city of Overland Park for us to be able to add 875 square foot to that building for the kitchen. And then we have lots of roof and HVAC projects, and then general maintenance projects around the district. So a lot of work going on to refresh the Shawnee Mission School District. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Southwick. In the state of Kansas, January this month is School Board Appreciation Month. So we want to pause tonight and say thank you to each of the seven school members who serve on the Shawnee Mission Board of Education. I trust everybody knows it's a volunteer position. I know the board understands. It's a volunteer position. You know, in recent years, unfortunately, you've had to make a lot of decisions that are not easy decisions, decisions you wish you had other resources and other alternatives. But you do that on behalf of the Shawnee Mission School District. We have plans for you tonight. You can select whichever one you want. We would ask that you do that in a cooperative manner. You don't fight over a certain plan. But we really appreciate everything you do serving the students and the employees of the Shawnee Mission School District. The task is not easy. The decisions you have to make many times are very, very difficult, representing everybody in Shawnee Mission. But on behalf of the community, we want to say thank you for everything you do to serve the Shawnee Mission School District. So thank you very much. If we could give them a round of applause, please. Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn.
Craig wants the plastic plant. C1, a presentation by the Shawnee Mission Education Foundation, Linda Roser, Executive Director.
Good evening, and thank you very much for allowing me to speak with you. I am here tonight to announce a bequest from the estate of Mary Jo Rothz in the amount of $25,000. Dr. Rothz was a lifelong educator with 35 years in Shawnee Mission. She began as a fourth-grade teacher at the Lindwood School in 1954. When she retired in 1989, she was Director of Reading and Language Arts K-12. She would proudly proclaim that she had taught every grade from kindergarten to grad school with no skips. Of her Shawnee Mission memories, she said she had the most fun and the biggest laugh with her fourth graders. Dr. Rothz was a charter member of the McKeechen Circle, the foundation's legacy society. I had the distinct privilege of knowing Mary Jo and visiting with her as part of our annual McKeechen Circle visits. She was quite simply a delight, a vivacious lady with a quick wit and sparkling eyes. While sharing Shawnee Mission history, she also remained keenly interested in Shawnee Mission today, peppering me with questions about what was going on. Her passion for children and education lives on in her generosity. Her entire estate benefited education. It is a significant honor for Shawnee Mission to be included in what was important to her. Her unrestricted gift is added to the endowment to grow for students now and for generations to come. Thank you.
Okay, we move to D1, which is Open Forum. At the beginning of each regular business meeting, the Board of Education provides an open forum as an opportunity for public comment on school district issues. Agendas are published in advance to notify the community of the topics under consideration. Patron comments are welcome, but those wishing to speak to an issue not included in the agenda will not usually receive a response during the meeting. The board president will place a time limit per speaker on open forum remarks, which tonight, I think, we've got a few, so we're going to hold them to three minutes. And Craig, you will be my timekeeper, correct?
Yep.
All right. And if you have, if you notice, too, that someone else has maybe already covered your topic, you are allowed to pass, too, as I call your name, so. So, okay, our first speaker is Linda McCormick.
Thank you very much for having me. I'm here today to talk about the technology that we're rolling out in the Shawnee Mission School District. Actually, we've already rolled it out. I'm a parent. My, I have a fifth and seventh grade, a fifth and seventh grader in our district. I'm also a technical project manager. I've got almost 20 years of experience doing project management rollout, so I have a little bit of a bias. I'm just letting you know ahead of time. There were two things I wanted to talk about tonight and just bring up, and even a suggestion for where we might go, but obviously, there's not enough time to really have a dialogue. The first thing I want to talk about is technical support. So, we have AirBooks, and we have iPads. And I have already, as a parent, had some experience with technical support. There's some fantastic teachers that I've been working with at the elementary school that have been dealing with technical support of the iPad, and I'd like to suggest that there's an opportunity for improvement. We're all looking for ways for us to raise the bar, take it to the next level. There's no such thing as stopping. We're all gonna grow as a district. This area, to me, is low-hanging fruit. The next time you have a contract set up with Apple or a feedback session, include the parents, I suggest, and make sure that their thoughts and their comments regarding how this is going in the home are included. I have learned I have to buy a new router. I am not going to do that, okay? Sorry, I'm not. I should not have to buy a new router for my son's iPad to work at home, okay? That was the first thing I wanted to suggest, and also a possible solution. The second thing that I want to talk about is consistency. Everybody knows that you have to give creativity its ring. You have to give our teachers an opportunity to teach creatively. However, when it comes to communication between a parent and a teacher, I would like to suggest there's some opportunity, maybe a task force or communication, where you actually start having more consistent communication back and forth between the teacher and the parent, and leverage that technology to do it. I'm seeing inconsistent communication in the middle school, not all the time, and the teachers are fantastic and they work very, very hard. But I think there's an opportunity to pull our parents into see, so I may be the only one who's seeing it, right? But if we're seeing it in other areas with other parents in other parts of middle school and high school, there is an opportunity, in my mind, to actually make things more consistent across the board, so that we get what we want, which is our parents are talking to our teachers, our teachers are talking to our parents when it's appropriate, the kids are learning, because it's a consistent way of communicating grades, issues, missing work, that kind of thing. We're all working together as one community. That's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Our second speaker is Dorothy Warner. Did I say that right? Dorothy Warner? Dorothy Warner? No? Okay. Third speaker is Brayden Pomerance.
My name is Brayden Pomerance, and I'm a senior IB diploma candidate at Shawnee Mission Northwest. My fellow IB students and I are here to express support for the program and explain the benefits of maintaining it. However, we appreciate that you have postponed your decision on its future for now. IB promotes an in-depth, well-rounded education with a global perspective and encourages students to question their surroundings. The interdisciplinary focus of IB encourages students to analyze how different subjects relate and discuss their applications to the real world. No other curriculum allows students to write essays on topics of their choice for each class. While this is challenging, it encourages students to communicate their ideas and discoveries, a vital asset for life success. Additionally, the extended essay allows students a glimpse into undergraduate research. Lastly, having the same class, teacher, and peers for two years allows students to delve beyond the surface level. IB sets SMSD apart from other districts. At Northwest, there are several students who wouldn't be in the district had IB not been an option. Many of the brightest students at Northwest are in IB and not only apply, but are accepted into schools such as Duke, MIT, the University of Chicago, and many other top universities. But don't just take my word for it. Marilyn Lewis, the Assistant Dean of Admissions at Harvard, stated that success in IB correlates with success at Harvard. Dr. Eugene Carson at Virginia Tech stated that IB students significantly outperformed all other freshmen, including students who hadn't taken AP courses. Next, I would like to address some of the reasons we were given for phasing out IB in the first place. The first was that it gains low college credit. However, when AP first came into existence, it didn't garner the recognition it does now. It took time and effort for universities to realize its benefits. IB is only beginning that process. Cutting it now would be to give up or take a serious step back from its future of the program. The importance of college credit cannot be ignored. However, it can also not be ignored that it is not the only factor. Unfortunately, college credit runs out once a student actually gets to college. The values of in-depth analysis and global perspective stay with the student forever and allow them to pursue jobs after college. Even though IB sometimes receives less credit than AP, the best universities value IB first, and IB still receives an ample amount of credit. The second reason we were given is that there is low participation, but that is no reason to give up on it. Instead, we should encourage more participation. The reason there is little participation is because it is new. Most of the students have only ever been exposed to AP. A new program should be encouraged, not given up in its infancy, and I believe that the support on the petition and the attendance tonight are a good first step. All of us understand the inevitable reality of budget cuts. However, we believe that cutting IB should not be that solution. If anything, certain classes or options can be limited. For more information, please look at our petition, which now has over 1,000 signatures from former and current students, former teachers, and parents. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Our next speaker is Brian Coon.
Good evening. Thank you to President Goodburn, Dr. Henson, and the school board for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name is Brian Coon, and I am the Legislative Liaison for Kansas Families for Education, a statewide, nonprofit, nonpartisan, pro-public education organization representing students in Kansas public schools and their parents. More than that, I am here tonight as the father of two young students in the district, my son Aiden, who is in first grade, and my daughter Zoe, who's in pre-K. I'm here tonight in reference to growing concerns I have about the future of the International Baccalaureate Program at the Shawnee Mission School District, but my story doesn't start there. My wife and I chose to live within the boundaries of the Shawnee Mission School District 13 years ago, almost seven years before my oldest child was born. We moved here for the simple fact that the public schools were rated as highly as the most exclusive and expensive private schools anywhere. We chose to start our family in a much smaller home than we could otherwise have afforded and pay much higher property taxes than we might in other districts, but the decision to live here was an easy one. Then and now, we want our children to have the best education. We don't mind paying taxes to educate our children, nor will we mind paying taxes to educate the next generation of students. So, when I hear that one of the signature programs of this district is on the chopping block, I get a little bit upset. I was just, last spring, attending a presentation by an IB coordinator explaining the many benefits of the IB program, and frankly, I was very impressed. It sounded like just the sort of program I want my own children to benefit from, and everyone's children, for that matter. True fluency in a foreign language after years of study, beginning in middle school, with the option of attending high school internationally at a partnering school, teaching students to become world citizens in the 21st century, the fact that interested students in this district are never turned away regardless of GPA, because unlike some places, the Shawnee Mission School District recognizes that all students can benefit from the more rigorous courses and are subsequently better prepared for college, career, and beyond. Perhaps most importantly, IB courses help teach perseverance. College professors comment that students who have completed the IB program are better prepared for their classes, and that students who complete an IB program have that advantage. The evidence supporting the effectiveness of the IB program is overwhelming, but I want to share one last piece of information the coordinator told me last year, something that really stuck with me. He said that the IB classes provide a supportive academic setting in which students can safely fail, perhaps for the first time, so that the young people who will be our future leaders can take the first steps in learning from their mistakes in order to succeed later in subsequent attempts. In short, the IB program represents the kinds of opportunities and helps create the kind of people I want my children and all students to become as an adult. So, with that in mind, why do you consider taking that away from them? Please explain to me why my children don't deserve a world-class education.
You understand this is not an open dialogue. It's a chance for you to make your presentation to the board.
Thank you for your time.
Vos?
Yes, Vos, sorry. Thank you. I'm here about IB too. I first want to start by saying I moved to this district a little less than four years ago from another state that came, I had an excellent school district. My husband and I looked at school district for houses. I interviewed Gardner, Spring Hill, Alatha, what am I missing? Blue Valley, and Shawnee Mission School District. We chose Shawnee Mission School District over all of those. I have the fortunate position of having three children in the district and at three different schools. My oldest son is a freshman at Northwest, my daughter attends Trail Ridge Middle School, and my son is a fourth grader at Ray Marsh Elementary. I've been hearing a lot about changes that are coming in the school district, so I started to attend school board meetings and super chats and any other opportunity to learn more. While I understand that change is necessary due to the changes and growth in our district, not all change is necessarily good. The change that I hear that I'm here to address tonight is the possible elimination of the IB program. My Shawnee Mission Northwest freshman is currently in the interdisciplinary program that is prepping kids for the IB program and is planning for an IB diploma. Information on the school board website last week indicated that the IB program will be phased out in the 2018-2019 school year. That information has now been removed from the website, and so, I, we are left to wonder whether this program will be available for our younger students or not. I'm here to strongly encourage you to keep this program, not for my own children, but also on behalf of Ray Marsh Elementary School families. I have, I'm here speaking on behalf of many of them. When my eldest son started middle school, my husband and I, when he was in sixth grade, and we had to start looking at middle school, and we also had to start looking at high school, what he wanted to do. So, we had to dig through the IB program, the AP, college now, and specialty programs. Since learning in the last week that IB may be cut, I've spent many hours speaking to parents of elementary and college students that have graduated from the program. I'm not gonna go into the benefits of the programs, I think the students have already covered that very well. But I also have learned that there are many new signature programs being added, global systems, public safety, and security on top of numerous existing specialty programs. At Dr. Henson's last super chat on Wednesday, he used the term "career-ready" several times, and when I asked if Shawnee Mission School District was moving away from college-ready to focus on career-ready, I was told Shawnee Mission School District is looking to offer both. After sitting through most of the school board meetings this year and super chats and hearing about the new career-ready programs and possible cuts to IB, it appears that we are moving away from college-ready. This is not the game of life, and college is still one of the best, if not the best, ways to get advanced in any given career field. I understand the IB program is not for everyone. I understand there is a need for career-ready programs, but not at the price of college-ready. The IB program is for higher-level, college-minded students, and I fear that cutting this program is cutting it for college-ready students in the Shawnee Mission School District, and they will not have the advantages they've been, they expect and deserve from their district. So many schools recognize and reward IB diplomas, including K-State, Pitt State, Mizzou, many Ivy League colleges, and many out-of-state colleges. Many out-of-state colleges will waive out-of-state tuition for IB students, and there are numerous other advantages in scholarships.
Are you about? I'm very thankful that you have not phased it out, and I urge you to not phase it out and on behalf of Ray Marsh families. Thank you. Thank you. I just ask that you please try to keep your comments to three minutes.
I cut.
Okay, thank you.
I was prepared for five, but I cut. Hello, thank you for your time this evening. My name is Christina Middleton, and two years ago, through a private evaluation, our son, my son Andrew, which is, gonna wave his hand over there, sixth grader, was identified with a learning disability of dyslexia. Dyslexia is a neurobiological condition. It happens in the brain, and it makes it extremely difficult to read, write, and spell. It happens with, despite above, even or above-average intelligence. It is a deficit in the phonological processing of language. It is not a vision problem or a hearing problem, and the individual with dyslexia is processing language, but it is taking an alternative pathway in the brain. Dyslexics have usually average to above-average IQs, yet they are struggling to learn to read and write like their peers. 20% of our population struggles with dyslexia. That's 60 million people in America, and they're like my son Andrew. I remember crying through years of parent-teacher conferences, every single one the same, crying, "What can I do to help? Why is he struggling so much?" They told me not to worry, that he was a boy, boys always take longer than girls, and he'll get it. I would wake him in the middle of the night with anguish, crying, a pit-in-the-stomach feeling, and he would be pulled out each day, an hour a day, for five years of reading interventions. He went through seven different programs. At the end of the fourth grade, he was still struggling, and I asked the school for help. I asked the reading specialist, "Could it be dyslexia, a difficulty with reading and writing and spelling?" "Oh, no, we can't say the D-word here," is what I was told. I asked the school if they could evaluate for dyslexia. They don't do that. And keep in mind, dyslexia is a reading disability. Despite years of intervention without sustainable progress, my son was never identified to need more. So, two years ago, at the end of Andrew's fourth-grade year, we decided an outside evaluation was necessary to figure out what was going on. This guy is smart, with obvious intelligence, had deficiencies in all basic components of reading, short-term recall, and the ability to decode words, even though he has above-average IQ, and he has an eighth-grade vocabulary, but he was reading at a second-grade level. Doesn't match up. The evaluator that we went to recommended multisensory structured language tutoring twice a week, and that's what we've done. But we are a fortunate family. We can give Andrew what he needs, and after 16 months of private tutoring, two hours a week, he's reading at the sixth-grade level in 16 months, a level that after five years of interventions, one hour each day, his reading specialist have been unable to reach with him. He has made sustainable progress, so much so that Andrew is closing his gap. I am here on behalf of Andrew and the other one in five students that may or may not have been identified with a reading disability of dyslexia. I represent a parent support and networking group called Dyslexia Johnson County. We are concerned that the lack of evidence-based instruction for our children with dyslexia, we are advocating for approved teacher training and delivery of evidence-based instruction. Dyslexia Johnson County is part of a national movement called Decoding Dyslexia. They are a group of parents and professionals bonding over social media, and they're sharing our stories, and our stories are very similar. They're not very different. We are all keenly aware of the progress that is happening in other school districts and other states. We are inspired by changes happening across the country with new laws, pilot programs, comprehensive teacher training, and successful classroom instruction that meets the goal of having all third-grade children at the third-grade reading level. Parents of these students have the right to believe the school system is going to provide the appropriate education for all children to be successful. Unfortunately, parents don't know that the school staff are ill-prepared to help their dyslexic child, and their child will most likely not get the type of remediation that is supported by evidence-based research to help those kids with dyslexia learn to read and write. Make no doubt about it, these kids can learn to read and write with appropriate remediation and supports. He's doing it. He disappeared. It's time for Shawnee Mission School District to stand up and take charge of educating all of our teachers in the area of dyslexia so that they can finally begin to answer the questions us parents are asking: How do we get help? It's time to provide the appropriate multisensory structured language remediation to meet the needs of the one in five students. Shawnee Mission has 27,000 students roughly. 20% of that is 5,500 students that probably are struggling in every classroom with reading, writing, and spelling, and they don't know why, or they may be identified and they're not getting the support they need. You can start by ensuring all reading specialists understand the warning signs of dyslexia. You can empower them to say dyslexia, not say the D-word doesn't recognize here. The U.S. Secretary of Department of Education put out a letter in October stating that it is okay to say dyslexia. Reading specialists can say it, teachers can say it, principals can say it. Shawnee Mission School District needs a course of action to close that reading gap. You owe it to these kids, to these parents, and to our community to guide these kids towards a success, a successful education, and towards a career beyond Shawnee Mission School District. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Again, try to keep your comments to three minutes.
Okay. I'm also here to speak on the topic of dyslexia. My name is Mindy Arnold. I do have handouts for you, because there's no way in three minutes to cover all the information you'll probably need to make educated decisions on this topic. I also have handouts for the rest of you. I welcome you to research it on your own as well, they're over on this table, that you can pick up when we're finished tonight. I want to start by saying, well, when I'm Mindy Arnold, I am dyslexic, and I'm so proud and happy to be. My son Jacoby is also. I've explained to him what that means, so that he can now be proud of it as well. I'll start by telling you a few famous people, that people may know these names: Tom Cruise, Steven Spielberg, Beethoven, Mozart, Tony Bennett, Michelangelo, Tommy Hilfiger, and guess what, the designer and chief designer of Apple iPad iPhone technology, he's also dyslexic. Neil Smith, football player here locally, people may recognize, the founder of IKEA, dyslexic. These are extremely smart people that are reshaping our world, changing our world, and really making a difference out there. The problem is, only a few of them make it through the system. As I said before, one in five, I want to repeat that multiple times, so everyone hears one out of five, a classroom of 25 kids, do the math, there are several in there getting reading help, and a high percentage of those are dyslexic. If you're autistic, if you're ADHD, ADA, whatever, all those abbreviations you get in there, right? So those kids, again, like 80% of them end up also being dyslexic, but we're not teaching them to read, write, and spell. I am also dyslexic, as I said. These are my notes. The notes that other people have do not look like this. You've seen the computer screen and able to read all of that. I'm just going to talk to you, because I could not possibly read all of that to you. But that said, I have three college degrees and a business I own and run every day, and I'm an entrepreneur, and very proud of being dyslexic. I can visualize, there are some amazing things I can do. I want to tell you that my son was actually supposed to be here, Jacoby. He's been in all his IEP meetings, and he's extremely passionate about this subject, now that he knows what he has. But tonight he is not here, because this morning in the library, his librarian did not realize that he should not be reading. He read three pages. Not 10, three, he's in 4th grade. Seems like not a big deal. That gave him a migraine that he had the rest of the day. That migraine came home and turned into such a horrible situation, he is in bed, all the lights off, he's been medicated, he set up and attempted to come, and only made it to the stairway, and could not come tonight. So I speak on behalf of him. Now, today was a better day than I've had before, because this all started back in 1st grade, where he'd cover one eye to read because the words were moving. We got him glasses, thought that would help. 2nd grade, he was talking about how other kids were picking up chapter books, and he was not able to read those books, but he would check them out, because he wanted to look like everybody else. By the time he got to 3rd grade, he hit what they call the brick wall. And he started having stomachaches, headaches, he'd go to the nurse about three times before the nurse would finally call and say, "Your son is up here again. He has a headache and stomachache, but there's no fever, he, you know, wants to talk to you." So I'd go pick him up, this was usually about 1 o'clock, and he would say, "Mom, I can't go back in there, you need to homeschool me, I can't do this, you have to homeschool me." I had this happen at least once a month, then it got to once a week. By the time we got to 4th grade, we started the year off, and only two weeks in, and I got these phone calls. So my son went to Children's Mercy, because as she said before, the schools do not look at this, they don't analyze this, they don't know how, they don't know what to do it, most of the teachers don't know what dyslexia is. Went to Children's Mercy. He did a four-hour torture test.
Excuse me. We're at four minutes? Can you?
I'd love to tell you the rest of his story.
Did you give it to us in writing, though? Is that what you?
Not his story.
But you gave us some information?
And if you have, if there is an opportunity for a task force, I would love to work on this, because his IEP is due February 17th, and if he doesn't get an Orton-Gillian program, which I gave you a list of, there's about 11, they won't be able to teach him to read. And he could be private tutor, like Andrew. Our family has offered to put the funds together, it's anywhere from $7,000 to $14,000 per year, and it's at least a two-year progress for him. But he has asked for me to fight for it to go in the schools, because he says he knows he has friends in there that feel dumb also, and he felt dumb. Once he was diagnosed, he actually, I said at the meeting with you as well last week, he said, "Stress relief, I'm not dumb, Mom." I said, "No, you're not, but did you think you were?" He said, "Yes." There's a lot of kids like him, and he wants me to fight for it to get in the school. So on his behalf, I'm here to, I would love the opportunity for him to speak to you, when you have a longer span of time that he can tell his story, and fight his fight for the IEP to be something that goes through the school.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay, E1, approval of minutes, regular meeting?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Denny. Let me get to my place here. Thank you, Ms. Seela. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Okay, adoption of the agenda.
Move for approval of the adoption of the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Mack. Thank you, Ms. Neber. All those in favor? Oh, yes, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries 6-0. G1, approval of routine business by consent?
Move for approval.
Thank you, Dr. Denny.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Neber. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries 6-0. That moves us through the consent agenda. Down to, let's see, down to M1, education service. Approval of the high school program planning guide for 2016-2017, Dr. Henson.
Dr. Strick, thanks for joining us again tonight. We appreciate the lengthy presentation earlier in relation to student achievement in the Shawnee Mission School District, so present to us the 1617 program of studies. Let's start with the high school, please.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Henson, members of the Board of Education, for providing an opportunity for us to discuss the proposed changes for the 201617 high school and middle school programs of study. Regarding the changes that we find within the proposed 201617 high school program of studies, I want to share that we've involved high school teachers, counselors, building and district-level administrators during a three-month conversation about these proposed changes. Through this process, the focus has been on identifying proposals for change that support the district's strategic goal of improving rigor and relevance for all students in all grade levels, in all subject areas. From this discussion, I'd like to highlight a few of the following proposed changes that would take effect in the 201617 school year, if the board approved the proposed changes. We would eliminate AP exam requirements to have an AP designation on their transcripts, this is in accordance with the College Board. We would remove the final exam exemption for all students unless they participate in either an IB or an AP test in the spring. We would remove K-credit without an associated written curriculum that would tie to the educational outcomes. We would eliminate the computer competency requirement to graduate from a high school in Shawnee Mission School District because of our rigorous technology integration within our district's classrooms. We would provide two new signature programs based on community, business, and higher education guidance. Those two programs, one has already been alluded, the law on public safety and security, Project Blue Eagle, as it's affectionately known. This is championed by our community, and what better to have a resident expert in John Douglas, who has a 41-year experience in working in the real world, in terms of what that would entail, and he would be a champion for that program for us within the Shawnee Mission School District, as we begin to expand those opportunities for students. We also have the Global Systems Program, which ties in the animal health, sustainable food, as well as system planning for the future. And as you very well know, we are on the corner of the huge bioscience corridor that's taking place within Kansas and Missouri, and so this program would be able to provide that opportunity for our students. This is being championed by Dr. Christy Ziegler and Dr. Michael Schimacher, in association with Kansas State and other universities within the area. So those would be two signature programs that we would be providing. We also are proposing expanding Project Lead the Way to all of our high schools in relation to, currently, we only offer IED at each of the high schools, the first course in the engineering sequence. The second course that we would propose is the Principles of Engineering, that would be available to all of our high school students at each of our high schools as well. And then the second piece is, with Project Lead the Way, we have piloted computer science and software engineering. It is affectionately known as CSE in Project Lead the Way language. This program has been vetted by higher education, as well as many of our community businesses that support the induction process of their college graduates into their field of study and their field of work, and they have vetted this curriculum to say that it is a rigorous opportunity for students. The idea would be to put CSE as a program in place in each of our five high schools, knowing that it aligns with the College Board's new standards and examinations for computer science. So that would be expanded for the 1617 school year as well. For the graduating class of 2020, the incoming freshmen, 1617, we would add a financial literacy requirement for graduation as a requirement for the district, based on feedback from our seniors, senior exit surveys, as well as community feedback. So those are the proposed changes that we would be having, just to highlight a few. As a byproduct of the review process, we've determined that it is, we need a more comprehensive review of broader stakeholders being involved to look at all of the programs within the Shawnee Mission School District at the high school level. This will provide us an opportunity to have a strong academic preparation to ensure all of our students are college and career-ready, and this review will be used to craft future programs of studies moving forward into the 1718 and beyond. So at this point, I would offer an opportunity for the board to ask any questions, if you might have them, based on the 201617 program of studies for high school.
Question. I know this book is for this coming year, but as we look toward the future of the Center for Academic Achievement, some of the signature programs will be housed there, how does the timing of this document play into that? Meaning, what are some of the steps we can anticipate as we look to transition to that facility?
Great question. First of all, and I'll use Project Lead the Way as an example, one of the issues that I think we've identified across the board, is it's very difficult for students after their freshman year to make the jump and say, "I'm willing to transfer to a different building," to try to establish and participate in a signature program. By having Project Lead the Way, freshmen and sophomore, as well as the signature programs at each of the freshman levels, what we'd be able to do is provide a wider funnel, if you will, so that we can try to capture student interest, so that when we do move to the new Center for Academic Achievement, we would have a broader base to funnel in and feed into that new program. The idea being that we would offer our signature programs as many as possible within that facility.
And are there prerequisite courses that folks should be looking at in order to make that decision in a couple of years?
Yes, and that's part of the reason for the proposed changes. So that we can ensure that we have that foundational support at each building to allow that to take place.
Great, thank you.
And also, Mr. Stratt, the timing, we hope to move into the Center for Academic Achievement during this next school year, knock on some wood. Students wouldn't start the signature program component until the 1718 school year, so it would not impact this program of study.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Mack. I have a couple of questions, Dr. Strick. In the social studies, just a general question, it's on page 23, if you have it in front of you. I note sometimes that the H is removed for honors, along with the AP designation, like I'm looking at microeconomics, and the H and the AP are both stricken. I'm just wondering, does the capital H still mean honors, and will that continue on?
The distinction for honors, and I'll be honest, we'll go back through with a fine-toothed comb and make sure we didn't miss anything. The AP designation, if it is an AP course, the honors distinction would no longer be necessary, because AP is an honors program, or IB is an honors program. The honors is designated for those courses that do not have a comparable AP or IB designation.
And then another question I have, it's on page 30, it's about drill team. And my, drill team performs with the band usually in the fall semester for halftime and other events, and are they, I thought that part of the discussion was that drill team, while it would not be a K-credit, it could be used as a fine arts or physical education credit.
Correct. Best way to answer, each of the high schools are a little different in terms of whether they associate band with drill team, or drill team participates in band. But the idea would be that we currently have a dance course that is available, that we have learner objectives that are already identified within that, that could embody the drill team and cheerleading activities within that. We would be able to provide then a fine arts credit through that program if they enrolled in the dance program, or dance course. If they wanted to enroll in the band program in the fall, during marching band season, they would be enrolled in the band course, and be able to still participate in the drill team activities that are associated with band, and they would receive the fine arts credit through the band program. What this does is it removes the K-credit requirement.
Okay. Because I'm reading on page, would it be 17, under music? And, you know, when I look at the description of what band is, placement by teacher, there's a prerequisite, I notice on the drill team it said audition. I think we all understand what it means, but I'm just wondering about the description on band. You know, obviously, it says several different bands, marching and concert, you know, I don't know if we need, do you think we need more description, that drill team could be included in that, or I guess it's a known?
Part of the answer was based on, because each high school does not offer, or does not encompass, band with their drill team, the idea was that we would have individual opportunities for the counselors to begin to work with those students as a part of their four-year planning process for those course requests.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Any questions?
Nope. Mrs. Goodberg?
No questions?
Yes, Mrs. Seela?
I would move approval of M1 for the program of studies for high schools for the 1617 school year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Neber. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries 6-0. We move to M2, the approval of the middle school program of studies for 1617. Dr. Henson?
We'll go right back to you, Dr. Strick.
I'd like to offer the same opportunity. Most of the changes in the middle school program of studies are designed to reflect the changes in the high school program of studies. So there's nothing particular that I was going to try to address with the middle school program of studies, but I'd be happy to try to address any questions the board might have.
I move approval of the middle school program of studies for 201617.
Thank you, Ms. Neber.
Second.
Second, I'll take Dr. Denny's. Thank you. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Okay, moves us to, T1, board comments? Ms. Neber.
I think in the past, when we've had speakers speak, even though we don't address it at the board meeting, and I know a lot didn't give their addresses tonight, but a lot of times, we respond through written letter, and I don't know if we have all their addresses and stuff to make sure that they all get a response. I know oftentimes, it's hard to come and speak before this board, and you think we're not listening, and nothing happens after that. So there should be a response that will be mailed out. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other board?
I'll just give a quick update, that I attended the KESB event this past weekend, and wanted to share a couple of quick updates there. But there was presentations by both the Kansas Education Commissioner, as well as the folks on the federal level, talking about the rollout of two different, I'll call it, curriculum guidelines, that will be very helpful as we roll those programs into what we just approved tonight. But we also are in conversations with having the Kansas But we also are in conversations with having the Kansas Education Commissioner come to the Johnson County area to speak to the business community, as well as the school board, to incorporate the document just like this, so that we make sure that the curriculum that we're approving makes perfect sense, not only work towards eventual college preparation, but also career preparation as well. So just want to let you know, that was a byproduct that came out of that meeting today, and I was glad to be there on behalf of the Board.
Thank you so much for attending for us, because that was a two-day time commitment on your, on your part, so thank you so much. Anyone else? Seela? Dr. Denny?
I move the Board of Education recess to executive session in order to discuss matters relating to employer, employee negotiations. We will return at 8:30. No other business is, will be conducted following executive session.
Second.
Second. Do you vote?
Yep. We have a vote.
Do we need to vote?
Yeah.
All those, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Thank you. Sorry.[1751.13]